Okay, I want to declare at 6:30 and call this meeting to order. This is August 11th, 6:30 zoning board of appeals meeting. Minutes to be approved July 7th. Has anybody read the minutes?
They should make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second. For my favor.
Aye.
No appointments. We're gonna jump right to the first case and actually we're gonna go to this second case of the night because the first case, nobody's here. So this is gonna be case number 2020 dot zero eight dot one one B. The case of Nicholas Monticello of 141 Nys Lane, a Kushner who was petitioning the board for a special permit to construct an accessory apartment over an existing garage. This request is being made under the provisions of section 3.3.1B1. Mr. Monticello?
Hello?
Okay. You can read that part, huh? So it looks like on the plan that you submitted, you're adding another garage to your property?
Yeah, because I'm building like an in-law on top of that. Because the land itself was just shy of being able to subdivide it. So in this case, I'm just gonna build a, an additional garage and then like an in-law on top of it.
Okay. The reason why I'm asking that question is because when I just read the agenda, I looked at the plans quickly and it looked to me like you were gonna put an apartment above a garage that hasn't been built yet.
Yeah.
And that's your plan.
Yep.
But yet your petition...
Yeah, I clarified it.
Over an existing garage, right?
Yeah, I clarified it with Jim. He said because the plan is to have a garage there and then build it. Like at some point, I guess I just need the approval to say that the in-law would be okay on the garage that will be there.
That's, that's fine. Well, that's, I mean, that's, whether it's over an existing garage or it's over a new garage. Just trying to clarify it because what, what the description on your application says is over existing garage. So we can scratch that and just say it's gonna be over...
Over, at some point, to be built.
Over the new garage?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's easy enough. Then all you have to do is meet the guidelines as far as the square footage on your property to meet the accessory apartment.
Yeah, and yeah, I've been talking to Jim throughout. He's been very helpful too.
Yeah, he always is.
Yeah.
How many square foot is the existing home?
I don't know. I think it's 1,900.
Single level or double?
Double.
And it's a standard 20, four by 28?
And finished basement.
And basement don't count.
Alright.
But you, you're gonna have to meet the requirements for square footage on the accessory apartment based on all the, all the floor
Yeah.
area ratio.
Yep, and then...
And Jim will explain that to you. So you design your plans. I hope you get your apartment within the...
Yeah, within that percentage, yeah.
Because you don't, you don't wanna build the apartment and not be able to use some of the space that's there over the garage. Because that's typically what'll end up happening. You'd probably have to make closets and whatever.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to, that was like the first thing I wanted to make sure I clear the tempo for going forward.
He'll guide you forward, no problem. The, the apartment looks at low end to be over 1,000 square feet.
I think it was just, it's in the nine...
Which is about 50% of your home, not 25. You're not even really in the ballpark.
The, um, but if I insulate the garage itself, doesn't that count as livable, livable space?
I don't, I, I, again, when you have an attached in-law apartment, the, the portion of the house that's not the apartment, you can try to add on as much as you can to get that up and get it. You, you basically building two different dwellings. You can't really say that the bottom of the garage, where you have a laundry room to, to utilize for the in-law apartment is part of your home.
Alright. Yeah, but I just wasn't sure whereas like, if it is insulated, doesn't it count towards the total square footage of the lot, which is then where I can get that percentage of the livable space?
It's really not up to us to decide. That's gonna be through the building department. It's definitely gonna, as I said, be, be part of your space, but it's gonna be part of the space of this dwelling, not your home 100 feet away.
Yeah. Alright, I can run it by Jim again.
Let me ask you this. If they proposed the garage and after the garage is built, can he propose for an accessory apartment above the garage?
And that's basically what he's doing, just trying to put the cap before instead of building the garage and then being denied later. He should get it done now, which I, I agree with. That's, I think he's in the right step. Because he does, he already has a garage. He doesn't wanna build this for nothing. He wants to build it for an accessory use.
Yeah.
I just, I don't have a plan for the house. I'm just taking his word for it. That is 1,900 square feet. We'd only be able to allow about 470 feet. Well, it's the total, it's 25% of the total floor, floor space. Correct. Now that typically they include...
Total, total area usable.
Yeah, and if it was an addition on the house, you would include the accessory apartment and the total dwelling. Not true. That's the way Jim's always calculated it. If you have a 4,000 square foot home, you can build a 1,000 square foot accessory.
25%?
25%, 25% right? Well, no, that's, the way Jim, well, if it's attached to the house, it's part of the living area now. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna speak while the building inspector, but that's the way he's calculated all the square, all the accessory apartments that I've done. And I never understood it, why you would go and add the square footage to the building and then had that be 25% of what was already existing. Because to me, because to me, I always thought it would be 25% of the existing.
What was there already? That's why, that's why, yeah.
That was my understanding. I can definitely agree that if the building inspector says it's 25%, however, he calibrates it, it doesn't matter to me. He's, he's, our zoning officer saying that it meets the criteria. And I don't see anything in front of me that says it does. That's... That's the way, that's the way he proposed it to me when we did a couple of accessory apartments within the last year. And I said, "You use the addition and calculate that as part of the floor area ratio?" And he said, "Yes." I ain't gonna argue with him. He's the one that's gonna enforce it, so...
He calls the shots. Let me ask you this. The reason you're doing this is because shy some footage for the second and third block?
Yeah, it was 2.56 acres. We needed 1.3 to split, so I was just doing this. I'm gonna be occupying it.
Okay.
Alright, so our job here tonight is either to approve or not approve a special permit. If you get yourself into a pickle later on, this is all in your hands between you and the building inspector and whoever else may be, if it gets approved. So, does anybody have any questions besides...
No, not really.
Anybody? No? And can I have a motion? I just, I think I just wanna explain to him, what happens is we're allowing you to have, uh, there's nobody here to say they don't want this. So if, if you go ahead and get this and build it, doesn't mean you're gonna be able to use it. It has to meet the requirements. You have to prove that it's only 25%. And then you have to come back before the board and, you know, to be able to use it. So, I mean, that's the way...
To get an occupancy permit in order to get an occupancy permit?
They've all been kicked back after they've been built.
Yep.
That, that's the way I've seen them. I mean, Jim, Jim changed that. Okay. Once we approved the special permit, what we used to do is have them come in. Just a couple of months ago, we had one come in after it was all done for approval. That may be, but I don't know why the reason was for that because I checked with Jim on this specifically and asked him that. And he said, "What we were doing before, years ago, we give a special permit out and they go and build it and then it was being inspected and then they would come back and we'd rub a stamp in and then Jim would give them the occupancy permit." But Jim said, "You know what? Why go through another meeting for nothing? Just let me follow up on it and I'll take care of everything." And I said, "I'm, I'm good with that." So all you do is do the special permit and he follows. We don't think we should, if, if we're gonna do that, we don't think that the board should see the proof that it's gonna meet the requirement? No, that's up to the building inspector. That's what Jim said. He'll take it upon himself to make sure everything's done through either the board of health or the building department. Then something should be changed so it's not put before us. They need the special permit from this board to get the approval. To get a special permit? Just to get, show... Just to get a building permit.
For the accessory apartment?
Right. That's all this is about. Who, why do you need a special permit if we're never gonna deny one because we, we don't, we don't have to see anything to show that it's gonna conform? We don't have to follow up on the codes. We don't have to follow up on what the building department does on that building. Of course, there's nothing even before us showing us that accessory apartment will be built to code. To, to, I mean, I... It's, it's the, it's the opposite. Everything that I'm, that you're showing me here says that it won't conform. I don't know that. If this is the plan he submits to the building department? There's a plan here for a 1,000 plus square foot dwelling. He has a 2,000 square foot dwelling. It absolutely doesn't comply. All the information's right in front of us. I don't... We don't have a letter of denial. So there's no arguments as far as the building department's concerned.
Jim said...
About moving, right, about moving this case forward for a special permit. That's all he's here for. If it doesn't meet the requirements of the building department, then that's up to Jim to figure it out. I'm not the, I'm not the building inspector. I, I do agree. I... It's an engineered plan. That, that clearly shows that it doesn't meet the requirements. That's, that's my problem. Well, you may have to modify your plan then.
Yeah, what's, I've been, that's what I'm saying. Like I made sure like...
That's not up to us.
Yeah.
We're not approving this plan. We're either approving or denying a special permit for that address. How you get there, how you get there is not my concern. That's all I want him to be aware of. I really, I, I agree with you. It's a special permit for accessory apartment. You come in, there's nobody saying, nobody here did anything. Right. I disagree with the fact that he has to come if there's nothing we're gonna look at, nothing we're gonna review. But I don't have any issue granting it either. I just want him to be cer, uh, sure before, you know, spends money on plans and starts building that. So do yourself not work right the way it's submitted. Alright, so is there a motion on the floor to approve a special permit for 141 Nys Lane for accessory apartment?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor of approving the special permit for Mr. Monticello, please signify by raising your right hand, please. Okay, it passes. Amanda's got an approval for you here. And just to be safe, and it's on record, as Bob said. You've got a unanimous decision. We're not against that. Just wanna make sure that... Plan, when you go show, when you go talk to Jim, because you're gonna wait 20 days now anyhow. Anybody can appeal our decision after a 20-day waiting period, after it's been posted. You can go see Jim to get your building permit. Before you, while you're there getting your building permit, you might wanna check with him on this plan itself that you're, that you're gonna be building and make sure it meets the requirements for floor area ratio, okay?
Okay.
And, because I don't know, I don't know if he's read, if he's looked at the plan or he hasn't.
Yeah.
Maybe you need it.
Right?
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah. If the plan's surveyed, everything I've been working with.
Just letting you know that you don't wanna go and start building a garage and find out your square footages are off and then you're gonna be, you're not gonna be a happy guy. Amanda, do you want this back? Because you can always change it, put on paper.
The July?
I got it.
Okay.
Can you just sign both of those, please? And one's for you, one's for me. That explains the waiting period. There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, congratulations then, Nick.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Have you all sat?
I'm good.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the second, what was the first case. Case number 2020 dot oh three dot two four C. It's a continuation of the case of Jennifer Mellow, Milo of 367 Middle Road, a Kushner who is petitioning for a special permit to convert a single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling. This request is being made under the provisions of section 3.3.1B6. Mrs. Mellow or Milo are representatives. And since there's nobody here, uh, this is the second meeting that nobody's attended. Make a motion. We deny the case based on a no shell. Is there a second there? All those in favor?
Aye.
Signify by raising your right hand, please. Okay, unanimous, denied. Do... Do we have any old business you'd like to discuss? How about new business? I got something I gotta bring up here because I'm not sure where we're going. And I attempted to get some information, but I can't seem to get it. Okay, we got a case coming up for the, uh, the old Shell station over here.
Yep.
We had it scheduled for the school because we figured it was gonna be a large audience and that was for tonight. Actually, it would have been for tonight because we would have had it on the agenda, but since we only had these two small cases, we came here. My understanding is we can't use the school anymore for any more public hearings.
I think that's wrong because we, the planning board has one coming up September 29th.
Okay, but this is what I was told from town hall.
Okay, I'm just, we have a schedule. I don't know.
Is the school committee allowing that to happen? Because the last time I called the selectman's office, I asked if the school was being able to be used after the 10th, which today is the 11th. And we were gonna have our meeting there because we were gonna have the New England Farms case there along with these two cases. But I was told that by Jim Marra that the school is not gonna be available after the 10th. And you guys had a meeting there on...
The 6th.
The 6th. Did you have a big turnout?
Yes.
You did. So we can't advertise until I know for sure that we can use the school for the venue. Because I got a feeling it's not gonna be three people like there were last week when I was...
Well, they had brought plans in for site plan review
Right.
from the planning board with bundles of information. I think they went to the town clerk. He has a copy and I, I don't know where the rest is.
I haven't got a chance to talk to you about it?
Yep.
And I tried to catch, I tried to catch it on TV that night.
Yep.
It wasn't live?
Nope, and it was just, they only brought in all the paperwork in order to begin the site plan review because the site plan review is a public hearing and it has to be two-week notification, et cetera, et cetera, like everybody does.
Right, right. So we postponed that meeting until we didn't know when, but I didn't, I don't have it. I was told that the 10th of August, the school committee, one of those, to stop using the school for public hearings.
I'll just have to check with them.
So I haven't got an answer back. That's why I haven't gone back to you about advertising for it. I talked to you again. Sanitizing for the school. The engineer... That's what it's all about. The engineer for the project, I called him and talked to him and let him know that it was being postponed and that they were going to the planning board for site plan review. Because even though we do site plan review and have done site plan review in the past, this project is probably one of the bigger projects that I've seen on this board. Other than Dunkin' Donuts. We did Dunkin' Donuts years ago. And we did the site plan review. That wasn't going, that didn't go through planning. And we, we approved that one. And we went over the plans and all the people came in and they all complained. And then everybody was happy after they got all the suits done, going through the guy's property. So everybody was happy and, and he got his Dunkin' Donuts. This has got a little more to it, okay? And I've been asking that since the time I heard about it. Is why doesn't planning do site plan review on a project like this? You guys had access to engineers. You get access to lawyers. You get the town planner. You get the building inspector working with the town planner. We get nobody working for us.
That's right. That's why I wondered why they were coming to the board of appeals.
They still have to come here.
Afterwards?
They still have to come here for an approval just because of the square footage, because of the square footage of the building.
For variance or a special permit?
They have to come to see us about taking residential property and making it commercial?
No, it's already a business. It's already, it's, it's business. It goes all the way down to...
On Wing Road too? Does it go down to Wing Road?
No, but it goes 300 feet off of...
Oh, alright, alright, okay.
300 feet in, in both directions off Main Street.
Okay.
This way and all the way down to...
That makes sense now, okay.
So if you buy a house down on Lawson Avenue, it's 200 feet off from Main Street, you can... It's still a business. You can still put a business there, yeah? So, but that's, that's, you know, the, I gotta, there's other things that need to be asked along the way. But combining residential property with that particular property, there are already butters. It creates other stuff and I talked to Jim about some of this, but I don't wanna get into the details right now. What they're gonna have to come and see us for basically is anything over 3,000 square feet for building has to be approved by, get a special permit from this board for the additional square footage, bigger 4,000. So that's what they're gonna be in front of us for after the planning board. Which is a lot less than what's there now. Probably, might be. Combined.
Let me ask you this question and it just came into my mind, my, why couldn't we have a dual meeting?
I talked about the possibility of that with the town administrator because of the location situation of if we had to look into either renting a space, having it somewhere else, if we can't use the school, doing a back-to-back meeting, having planning meet, you know, and then followed by ZVA or, or one or the other.
I don't, I don't see the rush to come to this board to approve square footage until it's been approved. The site plan, if it was been approved by planning.
It was more discussion of having the amount of butters and people expected that instead of trying to find a location twice.
No, I, I hear you.
That a lot of the same people would be interested in both cases that we might as well have the meeting back-to-back and have people just stay through for it.
Your, your meeting went over two hours last time.
Yes, because we haven't had people in three months. We had a lot of stuff.
Oh, you had other stuff going on too?
Absolutely.
Eight cases.
Or you didn't just do the...
No, it was all kinds of stuff. Four public hearings.
Ah, okay.
Different, uh, release law, stuff we had to catch up on.
I went, I went on cable to see if I could watch it on cable and you can't even see it on cable.
Nope, I think it's on...
It's on YouTube now.
It's running?
It's up.
I just checked it a couple of days ago.
Oh, no, I watched it last night.
Okay. But I'm thinking, it, it shows on the timer on the cable channel that it's two hours and 20 minutes or something.
Yeah.
Unbelievable.
So I thought you guys had a two-hour meeting just going over paperwork and I'm thinking, yeah, they didn't get that done that night.
No, all kinds of different things.
And I didn't get a chance to talk to you about it.
Two and three solar, solar farm reviews.
But you know, you got another meet, you got another meeting scheduled with that people then?
September 29th.
Okay.
24th.
No, 24th, thank you.
You're welcome.
I must have nine.
Is that something, is that, is that...
24th, yep.
Is that gonna be the only case you guys have that night?
So far it's one, one, two, three, four, five as of this moment.
Do you think that you guys are gonna have any decision made that night for them?
No way.
No way. Right, so you're gonna pull, you're gonna have to continue that meeting?
Correct.
Again?
Yes.
So there's no rush.
So maybe you should play, maybe look at doing a possible joint meeting on when you think you're gonna be closer for planning? And then maybe even schedule as a special meeting and have just that case for planning and just that case for ZVA?
Well, let's see what happens on 29th.
It's kind, it's kinda like, I don't wanna go and get ahead of these guys.
No, I agree.
Because if we approve a building that's 4,000 square feet and they get denied from them.
And they get denied, yeah.
So what's the difference? We're just gonna be like, if they approve it and they gotta be all the conditions that they're expecting to have them meet and they approve it, I mean, it's a matter of, it's a 10-minute meeting for us.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't see a site plan, a site plan reviews take a while.
Yeah.
It gives you to different cases. It's usually extended two and three or four months after the public hearing so everybody can get, dot their i's, cross their t's, make sure all the footage is right, make sure everything is right. It doesn't happen the first time. We, sometimes we have to get KP Law involved if there's, we can't ask, answer all their questions.
Right. I don't understand.
It should be a later date then, huh?
Excuse me?
I, I understand. This is not just a, you know...
This is a phone call presentation. That's, this'll be, if the meeting occurs and they can still use the school, we just made the date as long as we can get the school. If the school's gonna let us go, then...
Well, that's, that's not for me to answer. I mean, that's the last answer I got.
Yep.
Am I, am I wrong? I could be. Things change every day around here.
That's right.
That's why we've been bouncing around, the way we've been trying to set up schedules and meeting dates and everything, driving her nuts. But we're trying to do what we can with what we have.
Yep.
So how about this? We have a case for September that just came in. So do you want, I'll put it on the agenda for the next one. We'll just have another update of this case and see where we're at next month. Well, it'll still be before you meet anyways unless you guys wanna have the meeting after planning board meets. We can get an update from planning board essentially on how it went and kinda have another idea of what we're looking at.
Who is this kid? This is a totally different case.
Totally different case. We have one that came in.
How about if we do this? We scheduled New England Farms to come in the same night for that meeting. And, and if we approve or disapprove, the square footage of the building, the approval will be contingent on the approval from the planning board accepting site plan review. Then if, if they accept it, we've already done what we need to do. And if they don't accept it, then it's not on us.
I don't disagree with that in theory, however...
If they don't accept it, they shouldn't be able to come back for whatever, they are accepted, it shouldn't be, now they can't come talk to us again for three years or whatever. Well, we're not, we're not approving site plan.
Here's, here's my only thing with that.
But, but if the square footage gets changed, well, I'm talking about if the plan they submitted to us, we could approve the plan. Agree? And, and, and only, it'll only be approved, it'll be, could be approved by the board, but it wouldn't be accepted by the town if the planning commission decides that the site plan doesn't meet their specs.
I would be hesitant to hold that meeting prior to the planning board meeting though because it's already being talked about around town. You're gonna have a lot of people coming and they're gonna want answers to, to questions that wouldn't be seen by our board.
The only question in front of, in front of the board is whether we approve the extra 1,000 square feet. Nothing else.
Okay, whenever you want.
I'm just trying to keep it easy. I mean, we can't have that, we can't have that meeting here for that one case. And then you have New England Farms here because that ain't gonna happen.
Well, that's what I'm saying. As of right now, we're only scheduled for one meeting. New England Farms is gonna be held up through planning board anyways that I think it's, it's almost counterproductive to try to make a bigger meeting when they're still gonna have to go through planning board.
That's what I suggested in the beginning. And if you wanna wait till planning's done and then they have, then they can come and they realize that planning has approved the site plan review and all we're doing is approving the square footage of the building.
That is difficult. There'll be a lot of the public...
That's the way, that's the way I would expect it to run.
Still gonna need a large place.
That's right. We might have to go to Foxborough Stadium.
Or if we did it, or if we did it the night of their meeting and we considered to go and they were gonna use the school and we went before they stopped their meeting, we could open our meeting, neither approve or not approve the square footage and then let them run with it.
That is completely your call. However, I'm away for the night that night, so I'm just saying it right now. I won't be around.
But is there no, the 28th?
24th.
24. Is there no requirement for us to act on a, a case? I mean, they, they've put in an application to the board of appeals. We, we can put it off as long as we want.
The timing right now because of the COVID situation, it negates that right now.
That 90-day timeline?
Yes.
Isn't, uh...
That's already gone through a couple minute page to, to assure us on that.
Even though we're holding a meeting?
They, I believe, I'm not sure how ZVA does it, but until all the paperwork is presented to us, the clock doesn't start running till then. And if they came in, they would have to have a public hearing to show everything, I believe, that they were coming in for, correct?
Okay. That makes sense. I'm just, I mean, we've got, I've got plans at home showing the whole site plan, everything.
Yep. Yep.
They applied months ago. I, I wanna make sure we're not obligated to act.
Yeah, no, I agree.
There's a certain time period, correct? That's what you're speaking about?
Yeah, I know it used to be, again, we, we had to. You, you had your 30 days and then your 30 days and your 30 days. You couldn't just tell people, oh, we'll get to that when we get to it, you know? Because it's not fair to someone trying to build something.
Once those 90 days are up, they automatically get.
Right, I realize it's different with you guys, but that doesn't necessarily relieve, just because you could put it off from the planning board position doesn't relieve us.
That's correct.
So would you like to have the meeting on the 24th prior to planning board? Or would you like to meet the Tuesday after planning board meets? Or did you wanna do it before planning board meets?
When do you have to? You have another case.
I have another case that just came in.
So it's mandatory that they have to be within the month of September, correct?
Okay, we'll schedule that one then. It, it isn't, isn't, from what I'm being told, we don't have to act on anything right now because of the COVID.
The, the timeline isn't, we're not being held to the 90 days right now.
This other case. I'm not talking about this.
But they're the same. So I'm trying to get at is one, one case should be treated different than another.
If, I have no problem putting that on. I'm just thinking if, you know, we're gonna have to find a bigger location. So it would make sense if you wanna, if, if you do plan on talking anything New England Farms, I would, I would think to do it right before planning board because they're already gonna have the bigger venue.
Well, you're gonna have everybody there that's interested in our projects there that night. Now, did you have a large crowd? Were they the last case that night?
They were pretty late on.
Pretty late, yeah.
Yeah.
So did, did you have a lot of people that wanted us?
No, because I think the people understood that when they were bringing in these plans, it was only to present a permit for a public hearing.
No decision was gonna be made.
Correct.
But the people that showed up there expected that they were gonna be able to talk, right?
No.
No?
In the public hearing, they're able to talk, but not.
But this wasn't a public, it was a public hearing?
This was just presentation.
Presentation, oh, okay.
To bring the paperwork in, to start the site plan review process.
So you guys can review.
But the next meeting will be a public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you guys ask for any additional drawings?
They brought in 10 copies of everything.
Right, but did you guys ask for anything more that night? Or did you have to go over it and then you gotta request it from them?
Didn't even go over it. They brought it in, put it on the table.
They have some pretty good plans as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got it.
Well, compared to the plans that we got in that little thing.
Yeah, that's the whole stack.
On big triangle things, like 10 of them, long stuff like this.
Yeah.
There's a lot of stuff, I believe.
All right.
And we had asked them, I don't know if they're gonna make a, well, pinpoint, what do they call?
PowerPoint.
PowerPoint, that was close. Pinpoint, PowerPoint. And I don't know if they're gonna have a PowerPoint review or not, with the stage and everything. And like I said, we don't know if they can have it. If you're stating that after the 10th, the school will let us use it, I don't know.
Well, that was my last conversation.
We're already gonna be, you're gonna already be stuck with finding a location anyways and you have to adhere to the same advertising guidelines that I do. So it, it makes sense because we're gonna both be on the same timeline and looking for the same location.
Let me ask you this. Couldn't do it as, well, I don't know if you guys wanna hang around the planning board waiting for a joint hearing. We have.
Besides that, you have five other cases, four other cases coming up, plus that. Unless they're first, I wouldn't wanna hang around for two hours, you know? Plus the planning board. I can watch it, I can watch it on TV.
We're already up to, one, two, three, four, five appointments already up to 7:45. And then we start at 6:30. Not counting.
Not counting New England Farms.
New England Farms is on 7:45 site plan review. I expect they have to be anywhere between 20 minutes to an hour, depending on public response.
Have you talked to Lisa about the school? She hasn't, is there anything?
I haven't brought it up again.
She hasn't, she didn't get back.
I, oh, all right. I didn't know that I can't talk to her. I'm due to come in tomorrow and can, I'll talk to her.
Well, I called her, not last week, the week before, I think it was Thursday. And I asked her about that. And she said she was, oh, that's what it was. Ms. Hebert was out on vacation. So she couldn't get an answer direct.
And there's a lot of changes going on at the school daily right now.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I said, can you get back to me and let me know so I can let Amanda know so we can schedule a meeting so we can figure out where we're going and what we're doing? Because I, right now, I don't know where we're going.
Okay, so, well, we don't need to set the location right now as long as we set the date. Planning board's already set the date, so there's no harm in setting the same date because the location's gonna have to be figured out for both boards anyways. And you meet at 6:30, right? So would you wanna do it at like 6, do like a 6 o'clock on the, on the 24th?